Welcome and welcome back for others. We're going to go ahead and get to our agenda item. We had a closed meeting beforehand, so for the public, we're in the middle of certifying our closed meeting, so we're going to go right to our procedure for doing that. So we're at 2.03, reconvene to open meeting. Can I please have a motion? Ms. Henderson?
Whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative... The one before it? No. Reconvene to open meeting. No, certify. I'm on the...
Yeah, reconvene.
Sorry. I think it's... It's not opening correctly. I move that the school board reconvene to open meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, now we're going to go to certify the closed meeting. Ms. Henderson? Thank you.
Now I've got the right thing up. Whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. Let's do a roll call, Ms. Cadell.
Uh, yes. Uh, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yep.
Ms. Sherwood?
Yes.
And Ms. Tice?
Yes.
Okay, and now we're going to go to our meeting open, and it looks like Ms. Cadell, we're going to have to do another roll call for...
Okay. For who's present? Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Ms. Henderson?
Here.
Um, Ms. Tice?
Here.
And Ms. Sherwood?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cadell, for all of our Robert's Rules of Order policy wonks out there. This is... You're in for a treat, so... All right, now we're going to go to... We had on here originally 4.02, approval of electronic participation from a remote location for our board member, Ms. Murphy. For... Unfortunately, she is not going to be able to make it, so we're going to go ahead and make a motion to amend the agenda. I'll go ahead and make that a motion. I move that we amend the agenda to remove Item 4.02, approval of electronic participation from a remote location. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. But Ms. Cadell, can you do a roll, please?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy? I'm sorry, Ms. Murphy isn't here. Ms. Sherwood?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tice?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Zaher, are you keeping up with all this out there? All right. All right, now we're going to go ahead and move to our pledge, 4.03. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Now we get to get to the fun stuff of the meeting. We're going to get to Section 5, recognitions and reports. Dr. Noonan, we're going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Gould, and good evening, board members, and good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. This is a special evening for us because we get to recognize someone very special in our community, Howie Kates. How... There he is. He's got his hand up back there. That's our man. About, I think it was nine months ago, it might have been more than nine months ago, but it was a while back, Howie came to us, and you'll probably hear some of it in the video, but I'll take a moment just to tell you what happened. He asked if he could meet with us to talk about making the playground at Oak Street more accessible, and told some stories to us about how he was getting stuck in the mulch in his wheelchair, and he really felt like there needed to be a different surfacing to make it more accessible because there was another student coming up in a wheelchair that he really cares a lot about and wanted to make sure that she had a better experience than he had on the playground. And so we got to work on that, and Brian Fowler, who was with us at the time, had a chance to go see some of the playgrounds that the Kates family shared with us, that Howie would go to, and found a really nice surface there. And long story short is about a week ago, we cut the ribbon on the newly revised playground at Oak Street in honor of Howie. So we do have a video this evening we want to share, but tonight is really an opportunity for us to celebrate Howie. You know, we talk a lot about being an IB school division, and one of the things that IB learners do is they take action. And that is one of the things that we care the most about, is when you see something that needs to be taken care of, you jump in and you get it taken care of. And Howie, in his work exemplifies to me what the profile of an IB learner looks like in Falls Church City public schools, and for that, we're very proud of you, Howie. And we're going to, in a minute after the video, we're going to ask you to come up and see if you'll take a picture with us and have your family join us, but let's watch the video first. He made the pitch, and he said, you know, sometimes when I get out on... When I used to get out on the playground at Oak Street, because now he's at Henderson, he goes, "I'd get stuck. I'd get stuck in the mud. I might get stuck in the mulch. Is there any way we could look at doing some other surface that's more accessible?" One of the things that I'm really proud of you about, Howie, as a student at Falls Church City Public Schools, in the International Baccalaureate Program, one of the things that we say is you have to take action. You've got to do something that's going to make your communities better. And today, we're here because you've made our community better. So thank you, Howie, for your advocacy for the playground. Howie, do you have anything you want to say?
Um, I just want to say, I say how honored to you all, in front of all of you. I know it's hard to hide there, but thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Howie.
The honor, the honor, Howie, is all ours. And so we'd like to present to you a certificate. In addition to a playground. And the certificate says, "Of appreciation to Howie Kates in recognition of your advocacy for this accessible playground pathway. You exhibited international baccalaureate learner profile attributes, and you persisted. Your work has impacted the work around you and the Oak Street Elementary Playground will be accessible for all students for years to come." So this is for you to take with you and hang on your wall or put on your refrigerator. And now we'd like to cut the ribbon so we can get playing on this place. What do you think? All right, you want to come on up?
I'm saying...
Uh, you've got help if you need it.
You got it. There you go.
Yeah, you got it. You got it. Hang on. Give it the last whoop. Yay! Way to go, Howie.
Well done.
So, Howie, we would love to have you and your family join us, but as you're coming up, the last thing I want to say is that on that day, we had some folks taking pictures, and we got a really great picture of you with your hands up in the air, celebrating the opening of the newly revised playground, and it says, "Howie Kates, IB learner and advocate, February 27, 2025." And this actually is suitable to go up on your wall and not on the refrigerator. So we invite you all up for a picture with the school board. Chair Gould, as Howie heads back to his seat, we have a student at Henderson who I think is friends with Howie, who has asked me in a letter if we would consider turning YouTube back on for students. And if we do, he'd like to do a ribbon cutting for the YouTube. So, Howie, I think the ribbon cutting was a hit.
Howie, we appreciate you inspiring all of us, including your fellow students, about trying to undo YouTube as well. I'm sure our student rep, Charlotte Rice, would also support that maybe, so yes. Yeah. Howie, we really appreciate, really inspiring, and thank you very much for helping change Falls Church City for the better, so this will be a long-lasting memory and legacy. So thank you very much for attending, too. So thank you again. All right. All right. Well, that's exciting. We're going to keep the great recognitions continuing. We're going to now move on to 5.02, Give Day, for elementary and secondary schools. Dr. Noonan?
Yeah, so the last time, I gave away the whole video, so I won't this time. But instead, what I would like to do is invite up Chrissy Henderson, who is here with a couple of students this evening that are going to be speaking a little bit about Give Day, and as they make their way up, we have a video that we'd like to share about Give Day. So, Mr. Brett?
I remember, I guess, 10 years ago, Suzanne and I were hanging out at the pool, and we were talking about how Falls Church was becoming more affluent, and meanwhile, there weren't that many opportunities for our kids who were younger to get involved in community service. So we felt like the IB learner profile traits of being caring and open-minded and risk-taking was really a rich environment to think about how to engage our community in service. And so with the support of our administrators and our teachers and our families, we started with our fifth graders, got them involved in community service, and I can't believe that we're now 10 years in.
Yeah, 10 years later. Being new to Falls Church City, one of the things that made me want to come here was the sense of community, and today is a great example of that sense of community. I'm also really proud that as a school division, we worked towards building this sense of service in our students and making it something of what they do and who they are and having an opportunity for them to show that today. I think this is a great example of what can happen when that community, our school leaders, and most importantly, our students come together to do a project like this. And I think one of the things that's also really important on a project like this is when it's relevant for our students. And so the nearly 20,000 meals that are going to be packed today, that's all going out to support the Los Angeles wildfires and that tragedy that's occurred in our country. And so this is a great way for the students to know that this is something that's important.
Give Day is really a community-wide organization, so we go all the way throughout SECPS from Oak Street all the way up to Meridian.
It's really sponsored by the Middle School Give Day Club, but we're high schoolers, and we enjoy kind of coming in, helping them, and even sometimes fundraising for this event.
The goal is to make 20,000 meals for the people who are, like, affected by the wildfires in LA. I like that I know where it's going, and I know that the people will, like, use it and need the food.
Yeah, I just like feeling that I've done something to help my community and volunteering. It always just makes you feel good about knowing you're doing something for other people.
Although Give Day is a great day to give back, I think we should always be looking for opportunities to help give back as well.
Even with what's going on on TV, a lot of times, people fail to realize just how big of an issue food insecurity is regardless. So we're always trying to push people to get involved, and we always want people to, you know, help others out, and regardless of whether or not you're seeing it on the news, it's always an issue, and we're trying to solve it.
Anytime there's a lot of despair, kind of at the national level or global level, I always feel like it's really heartening when you see action taken at the local level, because when you can actually put your hands to work, people feel like they have a way of making a difference. And so I think it's great that we've continued the tradition that despite everything going on and all the sadness, that we can kind of harness that into positive action here locally.
They're giving back to their community each and every year as part of the school system, and then hopefully they carry that forward through the rest of their lives and continue to do this year after year after year. And hopefully, by seeing leaders in the community here as well, they see how important we think it is, that the work they're doing is important to our community and to those in California who will be recipients of this food.
Once kids start taking action on things, once kids start serving, it becomes easier to serve the next time. It's like simple physics, right? An object in motion stays in motion. Action, you know, promotes action. And so I think when we give kids opportunities to do really cool things like this, it propels them to do even more things in the future. You know, we're big believers in, like, we're trying to create an environment where we develop good people who do great things, and, you know, we've got a whole bunch of good kids who are doing some really cool things, and giving them that opportunity sets them up to do more of that in the future.
I remember...
Great, and Mr. Brett, I think you have some information about the elementary, and then maybe Ms. Henderson, you can introduce, or they can introduce themselves.
Yes, I am speaking on behalf of Kelly Harris, who is the elementary PTA president. Unfortunately, could not be here tonight due to illness. As many of you know, the annual Give Day Elementary Edition is quickly approaching on Friday, March 28, from 4 to 6, also at the MEH cafeteria. A wonderful event led by our fifth grade Give Day ambassadors with support from the Meridian students. It connects our youngest students with meaningful community service opportunities. This year's service projects focus on five important causes: food insecurity through PowerPacks with Food for Others, supporting animal shelters, collecting sports equipment, cleaning up Cavalier Trail, and creating care packages for various community organizations. And they also have their final fundraising dinner that is coming up this Thursday, March 13, at Raising Cane's from 5 to 9. 15% of the sales will go to Give Day. And don't forget to visit Panera after Give Day itself, where 25% of the sales will be donated to that fund. Again, March 28. Hope you'll be there for Give Day at MEH.
Okay. Thank you to the school board for having us here to represent Give Day. I have two, and I've got Brooke Brown was co-chair of the parent committee along with myself, and Ross Mandell was the teacher liaison this year again, and two students are here with us today to talk about their experience as Give Day ambassadors. So first, we'll have Beatrix Barba. And... Okay. Yeah. Okay. Hello. Good evening, school board members. My name is Beatrix Barba, and I am a Give Day ambassador. I'm here to tell you about Give Day. The day of service on MLK Day is a day where volunteers pack meals and ship them to places in need. But there's so much more to it. The students at NEA who attend Give Day Club start this journey months before. We start by brainstorming fundraising ideas, then putting them into motion. We need to decide a place to send our meals, which requires a lot of research and learning about different countries and areas in need. This year, we chose Los Angeles, where wildfires destroyed parts of the city. We also spent time spreading the word and making posters. Most of all, the students who choose to attend Give Day Club are deeply caring and motivated by compassion and have a genuine desire to help others. Their commitment to the cause reflects the values of empathy towards others and that we want to help people in need. These are key aspects of the caring IB profile trait. Give Day is about caring and being empathetic to others, helping people in need, and nothing is better than the feeling at the end of the day where you realize, wow, I made a difference in someone's life today. Thank you for listening. And we have Zaher.
Hello. My name is Zaher Smiley, and I'm a sixth grade, or a Give Day ambassador at Marion Henderson Middle School. I got involved in Give Day because it's a great way to come together as a community to serve other communities in need. Not only are we serving people suffering from food insecurity, but we are also making our Falls Church community more aware of needs of people around the world. We were communicators during bake sales and other fundraising events, explaining why we should donate to Give Day. We were open-minded in our meetings, listening to each other's ideas and feelings about potential beneficiaries. We were caring and involving everyone in the activities and not leaving people out. We also learned lessons such as advertising more for the spaghetti dinner and setting up more tables on Give Day because so many volunteers wanted to join, which is a good thing. I enjoy volunteering my time to help people and raising awareness of things that are going on in the world and how others can help, too. I'm proud that we sent 20,000 meals to California five victims. Thank you to the school board for their support.
Chair Gould, we would love to invite everyone who is associated with Give Day up impact you all had, and being able to see it up close in terms of all the dedication. for a picture with the school board, if that's okay with you. So come on up. I think, Ms. Henderson, is it correct that you doubled the goal within, like, the day before, from 10,000 to 20,000? And we still met that goal, and the students all met that goal based on their hard work? So that is really impressive for all the students and all what you were able to do and contribute, and it's not just the day of. I think as the students mentioned, there's a lot of planning that goes into that, and so appreciate all the student involvement. And Ms. Henderson, Brooke, all the work you all did, Ms. Brown, sorry, all the work you all did, you know, we really appreciate the leadership that you all did to coordinate. There were so many people involved, and you all did a great job of making sure that we not only hit our mark, but we made an impact. So thank you very much for your leadership. So, all right. And as Dr. Noonan said, that concludes our fun portion of the meeting for now. We'll get back to more fun later, but if anyone... We're going to go into public comments, so anyone's free to stay, or you're more than welcome to exit at this time. But thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. So we'll now move on to Section 6.01, which is our public comments and requests section, and I'll go ahead and read out. "In accordance with school board policy BDH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. However, those needing a reasonable accommodation or who need interpretation may have extended time. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record B disposition of requests." Ms. Cadell, do we have any public speaker notices?
We do not have any public speaking notices tonight.
Okay, and how about written notices?
We do. We received five. We had one from the Special Education Advisory Committee, and it regarded us special education and student services position, and then we had four regarding the support of a PYP coordinator at the elementary level.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Cadell. All right. All right, now we're going to move to our second closed. Let's see, I'm going to ask for a motion for 7.01, our second closed meeting. Everyone's looking down. It's like my old math classroom when no student would look up when I asked for questions. Oh, Ms. Sherwood!
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter. Personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, staff change positions, staff separation, dependent care leave, long-term medical leave, child care leave requests, and leave of absence, and advisory committee appointments, and student matters under Section 2.2-3711A2, in particular, non-resident employee tuition student.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes, and now we'll move to closed. Dr. Noonan?
We have a relatively short agenda, so I kind of would leave it to the board. Unless there's a lot of questions, we could meet in the back, or we could go up to the top level over by the city manager's office.
We can go to the top level. That's fine, yeah, just to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Noonan. Okay, so we'll be back five, 10 minutes. All right, thank you. All right. Well, that's exciting. We're going to keep the great recognitions continuing. We're going to now move on to 5.02, Give Day, for elementary and secondary schools. Dr. Noonan?
Yeah, so the last time, I gave away the whole video, so I won't this time. But instead, what I would like to do is invite up Chrissy Henderson, who is here with a couple of students this evening that are going to be speaking a little bit about Give Day, and as they make their way up, we have a video that we'd like to share about Give Day. So, Mr. Brett?
I remember, I guess, 10 years ago, Suzanne and I were hanging out at the pool, and we were talking about how Falls Church was becoming more affluent, and meanwhile, there weren't that many opportunities for our kids who were younger to get involved in community service. So we felt like the IB learner profile traits of being caring and open-minded and risk-taking was really a rich environment to think about how to engage our community in service. And so with the support of our administrators and our teachers and our families, we started with our fifth graders, got them involved in community service, and I can't believe that we're now 10 years in.
Yeah, 10 years later.
Being new to Falls Church City, one of the things that made me want to come here was the sense of community, and today is a great example of that sense of community. I'm also really proud that as a school division, we worked towards building this sense of service in our students and making it something of what they do and who they are and having an opportunity for them to show that today. I think this is a great example of what can happen when that community, our school leaders, and most importantly, our students come together to do a project like this. And I think one of the things that's also really important on a project like this is when it's relevant for our students. And so the nearly 20,000 meals that are going to be packed today, that's all going out to support the Los Angeles wildfires and that tragedy that's occurred in our country. And so this is a great way for the students to know that this is something that's important.
Give Day is really a community-wide organization, so we go all the way throughout SECPS, from Oak Street all the way up to Meridian.
It's really sponsored by the Middle School Give Day Club, but we're high schoolers, and we enjoy kind of coming in, helping them, and even sometimes fundraising for this event.
The goal is to make 20,000 meals for the people who are, like, affected by the wildfires in LA. I like that I know where it's going, and I know that the people will, like, use it and need the food.
Yeah, I just like feeling that I've done something to help my community and volunteering. It always just makes you feel good about knowing you're doing something for other people.
Although Give Day is a great day to give back, I think we should always be looking for opportunities to help give back as well.
Even with what's going on on TV, a lot of times, people fail to realize just how big of an issue food insecurity is regardless. So we're always trying to push people to get involved, and we always want people to, you know, help others out, and regardless of whether or not you're seeing it on the news, it's always an issue, and we're trying to solve it.
Anytime there's a lot of despair, kind of at the national level or global level, I always feel like it's really heartening when you see action taken at the local level, because when you can actually put your hands to work, people feel like they have a way of making a difference. And so I think it's great that we've continued the tradition that despite everything going on and all the sadness, that we can kind of harness that into positive action here locally.
They're giving back to their community each and every year as part of the school system, and then hopefully, they carry that forward through the rest of their lives and continue to do this year after year after year. And hopefully, by seeing leaders in the community here as well, they see how important we think it is, that the work they're doing is important to our community and to those in California who will be recipients of this food.
Once kids start taking action on things, once kids start serving, it becomes easier to serve the next time. It's like simple physics, right? An object in motion stays in motion. Action, you know, promotes action. And so I think when we give kids opportunities to do really cool things like this, it propels them to do even more things in the future. You know, we're big believers in, like, we're trying to create an environment where we develop good people who do great things, and, you know, we've got a whole bunch of good kids who are doing some really cool things, and giving them that opportunity sets them up to do more of that in the future.
I remember...
Great, and Mr. Brett, I think you have some information about the elementary, and then maybe Ms. Henderson, you can introduce, or they can introduce themselves.
Yes, I am speaking on behalf of Kelly Harris, who is the elementary PTA president. Unfortunately, could not be here tonight due to illness. As many of you know, the annual Give Day Elementary Edition is quickly approaching on Friday, March 28, from 4 to 6, also at the MEH cafeteria. A wonderful event led by our fifth grade Give Day ambassadors with support from the Meridian students. It connects our youngest students with meaningful community service opportunities. This year's service projects focus on five important causes: food insecurity through PowerPacks with Food for Others, supporting animal shelters, collecting sports equipment, cleaning up Cavalier Trail, and creating care packages for various community organizations. And they also have their final fundraising dinner that is coming up this Thursday, March 13, at Raising Cane's from 5 to 9. 15% of the sales will go to Give Day. And don't forget to visit Panera after Give Day itself, where 25% of the sales will be donated to that fund. Again, March 28. Hope you'll be there for Give Day at MEH.
Okay. Thank you to the school board for having us here to represent Give Day. I have two, and I've got Brooke Brown was co-chair of the parent committee along with myself, and Ross Mandell was the teacher liaison this year again, and two students are here with us today to talk about their experience as Give Day ambassadors. So first, we'll have Beatrix Barba.
Hello. Good evening, school board members. My name is Beatrix Barba, and I am a Give Day ambassador. I'm here to tell you about Give Day. The day of service on MLK Day is a day where volunteers pack meals and ship them to places in need. But there's so much more to it. The students at NEA who attend Give Day Club start this journey months before. We start by brainstorming fundraising ideas, then putting them into motion. We need to decide a place to send our meals, which requires a lot of research and learning about different countries and areas in need. This year, we chose Los Angeles, where wildfires destroyed parts of the city. We also spent time spreading the word and making posters. Most of all, the students who choose to attend Give Day Club are deeply caring and motivated by compassion and have a genuine desire to help others. Their commitment to the cause reflects the values of empathy towards others and that we want to help people in need. These are key aspects of the caring IB profile trait. Give Day is about caring and being empathetic to others, helping people in need, and nothing is better than the feeling at the end of the day where you realize, wow, I made a difference in someone's life today. Thank you for listening.
And we have Zaher.
Hello. My name is Zaher Smiley, and I'm a sixth grade, or a Give Day ambassador at Marion Henderson Middle School. I got involved in Give Day because it's a great way to come together as a community to serve other communities in need. Not only are we serving people suffering from food insecurity, but we are also making our Falls Church community more aware of needs of people around the world. We were communicators during bake sales and other fundraising events, explaining why we should donate to Give Day. We were open-minded in our meetings, listening to each other's ideas and feelings about potential beneficiaries. We were caring and involving everyone in the activities and not leaving people out. We also learned lessons such as advertising more for the spaghetti dinner and setting up more tables on Give Day because so many volunteers wanted to join, which is a good thing. I enjoy volunteering my time to help people and raising awareness of things that are going on in the world and how others can help, too. I'm proud that we sent 20,000 meals to California five victims. Thank you to the school board for their support.
Chair Gould, we would love to invite everyone who is associated with Give Day up for a picture with the school board, if that's okay with you. So come on up. Thank you, everybody, for attending, and obviously, hearing about how Give Day, the impact you all had, and being able to see it up close in terms of all the dedication. I think, Ms. Henderson, is it correct that you doubled the goal within, like, the day before, from 10,000 to 20,000? And we still met that goal, and the students all met that goal based on their hard work? So that is really impressive for all the students and all what you were able to do and contribute, and it's not just the day of. I think as the students mentioned, there's a lot of planning that goes into that, and so appreciate all the student involvement. And Ms. Henderson, Brooke, all the work you all did, Ms. Brown, sorry, all the work you all did, you know, we really appreciate the leadership that you all did to coordinate. There were so many people involved, and you all did a great job of making sure that we not only hit our mark, but we made an impact. So thank you very much for your leadership. So, all right. And as Dr. Noonan said, that concludes our fun portion of the meeting for now. We'll get back to more fun later, but if anyone... We're going to go into public comments, so anyone's free to stay, or you're more than welcome to exit at this time. But thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. So we'll now move on to Section 6.01, which is our public comments and requests section, and I'll go ahead and read out. "In accordance with school board policy BDH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. However, those needing a reasonable accommodation or who need interpretation may have extended time. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record B disposition of requests." Ms. Cadell, do we have any public speaker notices?
We do not have any public speaking notices tonight.
Okay, and how about written notices?
We do. We received five. We had one from the Special Education Advisory Committee, and it regarded us special education and student services position, and then we had four regarding the support of a PYP coordinator at the elementary level.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Cadell. All right. All right, now we're going to move to our second closed. Let's see, I'm going to ask for a motion for 7.01, our second closed meeting. Everyone's looking down. It's like my old math classroom when no student would look up when I asked for questions. Oh, Ms. Sherwood!
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter. Personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, staff change positions, staff separation, dependent care leave, long-term medical leave, child care leave requests, and leave of absence, and advisory committee appointments, and student matters under Section 2.2-3711A2, in particular, non-resident employee tuition student.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes, and now we'll move to closed. Dr. Noonan?
We have a relatively short agenda, so I kind of would leave it to the board. Unless there's a lot of questions, we could meet in the back, or we could go up to the top level over by the city manager's office.
We can go to the top level. That's fine, yeah, just to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Noonan. Okay, so we'll be back five, 10 minutes. All right, thank you.[1652.12]
Okay, welcome back. Thank you, everybody, for being patient. We are now at 7.03 reconvened to open meeting. May I please have a motion for 7.03 reconvened to open? I dragged that out enough. Good. Thanks, Kathleen. Ms. Tice?
I move that the board reconvene to open meeting.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Thank you, Dr. or Mr. Anderson. All in favor say yes. Any opposed? All right, motion passes and now certify the closed meeting, 8.01. Mr. Anderson, again.
Whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. Ms. Cadell, can you please do roll?
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Gould.
Yes.
Ms. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Sherwood.
Yes.
Ms. Silverman.
Yes.
And Ms. Tice.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cadell. All right, motion passes. Now I'm going to be looking for the consent agenda, which includes all the items from Section 9, personal items, student matter, advisory committee appointments, status tuition students, and approval extended daycare. Can I please have unanimous consent for 9.06? All right, thank you. All right, now we're going to get to our business action and information. Dr. Noonan for 10.01 VSBA Business Honor Roll Resolution.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Gould. This evening is the night that we get to celebrate a few businesses here in the city of Falls Church. This is the night we announce who our VSBA Honor Roll awardees are, and then I'll ask you to read into the record of resolution on their behalf. But there are so many businesses in the city of Falls Church that are excellent, and especially now with all of the places that are coming online where we have so many more to choose from. So to set yourself apart in the city of Falls Church as a VSBA Honor Roll, Business Honor Roll member is pretty extraordinary. So this evening, we'd like to first recognize Conti's Bike Shop for their incredible contributions to not just the city, but to the schools as well, along with VIGIO Physical Therapy. And then lastly, we'd like to thank and support The Thrift Falls Church. And each of those businesses have been really great partners, not only with the school system, but with the Ed Foundation and in a variety of different capacities. So tonight, we want to thank them, and later this spring, once we get the certificates from the VSBA with their names on them, we'd like to invite the folks in from each of those businesses, recognize them with a certificate, and then also get their picture taken with the school board.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. This is an exciting recognition and a worthy one. It's always exciting to see how our partnership with our local communities is beyond just the contributions of the donations, but student opportunities and different resources. And so it's a very deep relationship, so we're really appreciative of our business community. With that, I'd like to ask our business owner, small business owner, Ms. Silverman, if you mind reading the resolution.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. Whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depend on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future. Now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board's, School Board names Conti's Bike Shop, Local Thrift Falls Church, and VIGIO Physical Therapy to the 2025 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for the ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. All right, I appreciate the resolution. Now may I please have a motion for 10.01 VSBA Business Honor Roll Resolution. Ms. Henderson.
I move that the school board adopt Resolution 01-25 VSBA Business Honor Roll as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All in favor say yes. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. All right, now we're moving on to 10.02, and this, the next few items are about wrapping up our budget process, which has been a process we've been publicly working on since January. I think Ms. Kopp can say she's been working on it all year round, and we're looking forward to having this final discussion tonight. For this, Dr. Noonan, just to confirm, we'll go over the question and answers that were submitted since the last time, which aren't that many, and then we'll discuss the budget, and we'll look for a vote from the board tonight. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to take it away?
Please, sir.
All right. Well, thank you all for the opportunity this evening. I'm going to channel my Kristen Michael era. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to talk about the budget. There are two questions that did come in, question 50 and 51. 51 was not posted and 50 was posted late. So if you'll indulge me, I would like to, just for the good of the board and for the public, talk through those a little bit more in detail than we have with other budget questions. And question 50 was about social workers and psychologists' ratios, and the question was submitted by Ms. Sherwood. Given the anticipated increase in student enrollment and the recent increase in special instructional services populations, were increased needs for social worker services and psychologist services considered as a part of the budget development process, does the proposed budget maintain social worker to student and psychologist to student ratios under FCCPS criteria? And the short answer to that great question is yes, we do. The proposed budget does maintain not just this, our FCCPS ratios that we like to maintain for our social worker and psychologist to student ratios, but as we have every year for the last several years, we exceed the state ratios by a significant amount. So what that means for us when you, when you hear about standards of quality and positions that are funded through the standards of quality, we are exceeding those standards of quality in every, every, each of those two positions, both psychologists and social workers. In addition to having a school-based and full-time behavior specialist, we have a full-time social worker and psychologist at each of our schools, with the exception of Mount Daniel and JTP who share a behavior specialist. The budget that we provided, the 2026 proposed budget, does have $117,965 in there to continue psychology services grants that was previously funded by the Falls Church General Government through ARPA pandemic funds, and we are, we would like to continue with that funding because of the caseloads and the referrals that we're seeing across the division. So we, from a social worker psychologist ratio perspective, I can tell you that Falls Church City Public Schools is in a very good, very good position.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Any questions from the board or additional questions about that? Okay.
All right. Then question 51, which will be posted after tonight, and this came from Dr. Gould, and it's, it's related to a certain extent. Given the increase in specific stakeholder groups for the current year identified on Slide 12 of the budget presentation, which is the slide that shows our economically disadvantaged students, our students that are in poverty, our English speakers of other languages, et cetera, can you identify how the current funding requests in the FY26 budget support these populations specifically, not just all students? And are there any additional requests for support for each student, for such students that the superintendent would recommend, given the increase in enrollment percentages? So I went back through the presentation, and there are a number of places where there is specifically, you can draw a very easy line between the budget request and the populations that have been identified in this question. And the first place is, we have in the budget making permanent a middle school ESOL teacher, so that will increase our ratio of, for our ESOL, or keeping our ratios the same for our ESOL students. Additionally, we have in the budget a parent liaison at 0.5% at Mount Daniel Elementary School, which we haven't had a parent liaison, so this would be somebody who could come in and help us with students who are language minority students. The additional teachers that we have, I could draw a straight line and say that keeping our PTR, our pupil teacher ratio at 24 to 1 in the upper grades and 22 to 1 at the lower grades really continues to allow us to differentiate and meet the needs of each student. It allows us to continue to build relationships with the students that are coming in that may be economically disadvantaged or, or in need of additional ESOL services through that scaffolded instruction within the content area. Additional materials are in the budget, so we can also differentiate the materials that we're purchasing specifically for ESOL students and for our students that are disadvantaged or even disabled for that matter. The additional school counselor that we're looking to fund permanently keeps our caseloads down, and that again allows us to maintain and build relationships with all of the students that we're seeing from K to 12. I, you know, I don't want to stretch too far, but I would say, you know, getting the additional funds to put in a full-time Assistant Director of Student Activities allows us to connect kids that might not otherwise have opportunities to get into clubs or activities and sports to help build their community right away. Again, the psych services that are in the budget is another example that we will be able to provide additional support to kids, particularly, for example, students who are refugee students here in our school division. And then lastly, having that permanent advanced academic program coordinator at a 0.5 as a permanent solution really allows us then to dig in deeper to find our gifted and talented kids that are ESOL students as well. We have a portfolio process that we have our students engage in, and through different assessments and looking at language minority students, we have a better opportunity to identify ESOL students that are gifted as well. So I think there's a variety of different places that, that the budget really does connect to that question. At the time of our budget development, we were aware of the needs of the division as the population was changing. Those were taken into account for the future year, so the requests that we've made in the budget, we believe are reflective of what the needs will be for next year, so we feel very confident with what's in there.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Any additional questions or feedback or thoughts on that question, even though it's my question? Okay.
Could you just speak a little bit to the additional school counselor position? Is that, is that specifically for academic counseling, or is that for other needs?
That counseling position is currently in our schools. It was paid for out of ARPA funding, and so we're now making it permanent, but it is a position that sort of helps bridge the gap between middle and high school, kind of a transitional coordinator, transitional counselor, excuse me.
Vice Chair Tice?
Yes, I just had a follow-up question on that, that ESOL position at MEH. Is that a more traditional ESOL instruction, not the kind of, I forget the term.
I know what you mean.
Hybrid model that we've been using there?
Yeah, it is a more defined ESOL position as opposed to a, so this person's just, not just, is licensed in ESOL only, while some of our other teachers are licensed in, for example, mathematics and ESOL. So we're utilizing all of the licensure components of everybody's portfolios.
Got it. Okay, and will this be the only person with that, the only kind of full-time only ESOL person?
I'd have to go back and look.
Added others that I'm forgetting.
I'd have to go back and look. I believe that there are, there's a full-time equivalent in the additional positions, or a full-time equivalent with those that have alternate licensures, and then this person, I'm not sure if there's another half position or another full-time, so I'd have to go back and check.
Okay, that's right. Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Silverman?
Piggybacking on that, do we have similar positions at Meridian or with the full-time ESOL instructor, with the one licensure?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do we have, and do we have one or 1.5 or?
I'm not exactly sure what the numbers are, but we all, we have sort of a hybrid combo platter up at the high school as well.
Hybrid, but also having, so hybrid you mean?
Meaning a general ed teacher with an ESOL endorsement. Meaning a general ed teacher with an ESOL endorsement, and then we also have some that are just ESOL endorsed.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. All right, now we're going to move, Dr. Noonan?
So traditionally, and I'll just, I'll just say it just because I've traditionally done it, I would recommend that the board adopt the budget as presented.
Okay.
And it's up to you whether you do that or not.
I appreciate that, yes. And we know a significant amount of work has gone into this, and now we are here to discuss the budget that's in front of us. I'll open the floor to the board in general about any comments or questions. Ms. Anderson?
I guess I'll go ahead and kick it off. I know that we've gotten a few letters of support for the P Y P coordinator, and there have been some discussions amongst the board. And I do, while I respect that it is something that could be valuable to the schools and particularly to kind of taking some load off the current 1.0 that we have for the P Y P, I do think it would probably be prudent to not have that position in the budget for this year. I think there's a lot of uncertainty around economic factors going into the future. I think, you know, that gives me pause for concern. And given that we also have increasing student enrollment, I think beefing up the, the kind of, the kind of reserve, the teacher reserve fund that we can have is probably also prudent. I know that one thing that some people have asked is, well, you know, we kind of have a projection for the number of students for next year. And I will note, you know, being a statistician myself and knowing that there are airbands all over those things, we were kind of spot, they were, you know, our, people were spot on with the projection for this year only because the Broad in Washington opened late. So we started out the year with 2701, and we're now at 2748. And so that's just student growth within the year. And we have multiple developments opening up. And so we don't know how quickly those are going to fill up. We don't know how slowly those are going to fill up. And given the economic uncertainty that some people are facing, we don't know how many people might bring kids out of private school and put them in public school. So there's a lot of uncertainties about enrollment for next year. There's a lot of uncertainties about the, I would say, the economic forecast for the next couple of years. And I think it would just be prudent to make sure that we have, one, a reserve to make sure that we can put resources where they're most needed, and two, make sure that going forward in future years, we're able to provide a level of services that we can without overpromising what we can.
Vice Chair Tice?
I just wanted to say, I appreciate those comments, and I do, while I absolutely see the value of adding a second P Y P coordinator, I am interested in the concept of taking money and putting it, and putting it in a staffing reserve. But I was hoping, Dr. Noonan, maybe you could speak to how you would see, if we were to go that route, how you would see that working and sort of the timeline or the options that come with that.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate the conversation starting. So if you were to make the decision to move the P Y P position funding into a staffing reserve, that would be the amount that's in there, and you could just, as part of your motion, talk about moving that into a staffing reserve. And that would essentially leave that position aside. You make the final decision about the budget after the city council adopts their budget in May. So one thing you could do is you could set it aside for now, monitor enrollment. We, you know, I'm trying to give that to you every Friday so we can kind of keep up with it a little bit. And if at that time you felt like, you know what, it does look pretty stable, or we're not seeing the growth that we thought we would see towards the end of the year, you could make a different decision about it at that point, but it could be just set aside. Or you could just take it off the plate. Obviously, we put it in the budget because we thought it was important, and that was our advocacy. But I think there's a couple of ways that you could, you could work through it. But you would, you still have another, I don't want to say bite at the apple, but you have another chance to make decisions within the budget when you do your final adoption in May. And at that point, you can make a multitude of decisions.
Thank you. So just to clarify, so when council confirms, you know, the transfer on that, then the next, then we come the next day, and you would suggest that would be the opportunity to sort of confirm how some of that staffing reserve would be spent? That would be one opportunity.
Okay, I see, I see what you're asking. Yes, well, I wouldn't suggest that you all would make the decision on how to spend the staffing reserve. I think we would ask you to put, if you were going to set up a staffing reserve, that would be your opportunity to set up that staffing reserve. I would hope that you would leave it to us to say, okay, we need another third grade teacher, because you guys don't want to get into the details of that. But yes, that would happen in May, and we would share with you like, hey, you know, we are seeing growth. And, you know, right now we have, and just for transparency, right now we have $100,000 in a staffing reserve. So we've got nearly a position there already. So this would add another position into that staffing reserve, and you could do that in May. If the council gives us the full 5.9, which, by the way, is guidance, and we have met the guidance of the city council for the seventh year in a row, that would mean that that money would be there, and however you wanted to use it at that point in May is up to you. You could say, we want to go ahead and keep it in the staffing reserve, or we want to actually go ahead and get the P Y P coordinator.
So then we could say, if we kept it in the staffing reserve, then you and your team would decide at whatever point.
Correct.
How to spend it.
Correct.
It could still be used as, for a P Y P coordinator.
I don't think so. I wouldn't want to go against, I would not recommend to our staff that we go against the will of the board. If the will of the board is to put it into a staffing reserve, I wouldn't go out and get a P Y P coordinator with staffing reserve money. I think that would be disingenuous of me. But if you said, hey, there's this money here, where do you want to put it? I might say to you, like, let's go ahead and get the P Y P coordinator because we're not seeing the growth, or put it into a staffing reserve. Does that make sense?
I think so. But I just wanted to make sure that since this is sort of a new approach that the board understood, what that would mean if we were to go down that route, and if there were any follow-up questions.
Ms. Silverman?
Thank you. And if after May, when we get these final numbers, is it possible just to leave the staffing reserve as is and untouched at that point?
The current staffing reserve?
The current and/or with this addition?
If you added, yeah, I mean, if we had $100,000 in there and then we added $117,000, we now have $217,000 in the staffing reserve. And then in the summer, if we saw, we're seeing a lot of growth, like the high school project's starting to fill up. We're seeing a lot of kids come out of there. We actually don't have enough teachers. We need another one. Then we would pull on that staffing reserve at that point.
And at that point, just similar to the process that we just went through right now, does the superintendent come to, whether it's you or your successor, does the superintendent come to the board and say, I want approval on these expenditures? How does that happen? Maybe this is more of a question for Ms. Mason.
No, we wouldn't come to you for that. You would have put the money in the account for a staffing reserve, and then it would be up to us to utilize that for staffing.
Okay, so that doesn't give, like how we currently have authority of how the money is spent, that would not give us authority over how the money is spent if it's in the staffing reserve?
No, you have authority over how the money is spent. It will be spent on staffing. Which particular staffing it is would be up to the superintendent.
Okay.
Yeah. So you could say, this is going in the staffing reserve, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't go out and spend it on materials, for example, because that would require a budget transfer from staffing. If I came to you and asked for a staffing reserve budget transfer to materials, you could say, no way, we're not doing that. We told you that needs to go into a staffing reserve. And so I would use it for staff.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, that's the authority.
Okay.
And just to go back on a comment, but you said, like, specifically, if the board has kind of an inclination of, if they don't want a geometry teacher, then you're obviously not going to try to go out and fund a geometry teacher in May if you feel like that's where the will of the board is. But at the same time, balancing that with the fact that we have to respect the needs that you are identifying in your position, is that the balance between how we?
I don't think so. I think if you set up an account that's for staffing, and I, and we decide as a staff, we need a geometry teacher, we're going to go get a geometry teacher.
You made a comment earlier about saying you wouldn't want to go against the will of the board.
Like, I wouldn't spend it on a P Y P coordinator. If it's in a staffing reserve for growth, which is what I'm hearing you talk about.
I suit your side.
If there's growth in a particular area, that, I would see it as our authority to say what position we need. You guys say, we're putting this money into this account for that.
I see. That makes sense. Ms. Henderson?
Thank you for this discussion. It's very helpful to understand how this would work. This is the first day I didn't bring my big binder with me, so I can't actually flip back to where this is. But as I recall, there are already additional teacher positions built in to this budget for growth. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so can you remind us what those are and how they were determined, since we don't know where the distribution of students is going to be yet?
Sure. We have a pretty good sense of where the distribution of kids are going to be, and we actually have, based on what we're seeing with enrollment and enrollment patterns and also those cohort growth positions. So the positions that we have in the budget, that, and these are first positions that would become permanent. We would make permanent the math specialist and the school counseling position. We also are then adding an additional school counselor. We're adding an Assistant Director of Athletics. We're adding one special ed paraprofessional, one special education teacher, four and a half regular classroom teachers, a car driver, two bus drivers, or a bus driver and an aide. And then we would make permanent the ESOL teacher, and then we have added three paraprofessionals to special ed as well. And then the 0.5 Advanced Academic Teacher. So to your, to your real question about just general classroom teachers, we are adding four and a half general ed classroom teachers and one special ed teacher for the growth that we're anticipating.
And at what point would you feel comfortable that we could determine, that you could determine, who those, where those teachers would be, vis a vis what point we need to actually hire people to be able to get good people to fill the positions?
We're doing that now. We actually have a pretty good sense of where we're seeing the cohort growth. So if the second grade was 190 kids, but this year it was 100, or the cohort is 190, and now next year, third grade's going to be 190, but this year, the cohort in third grade was 160, we're going to add one teacher to that, to that classroom for sure. And then we're starting to see where registrations are starting to come in for next year, and we're seeing most of that growth at the secondary campus and at Mount Daniel. So we're starting to hire for those positions now.
And so the concept, if I understand it correctly, or the methodology to some extent, is we see what our bump grades are, size-wise, and we're not anticipating those are going, going to get smaller.
Correct.
That some degree of that ratios will stay between the grades?
That's correct. And we're also seeing some new enrollees at, for next year at certain sites as well.
And so if we were to set aside the whatever, $117,000 into a staffing reserve, that would be money that if we had growth that you had not anticipated beyond what y'all had anticipated, let me put it like that.
That's right.
That would be used to meet that need?
That's correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
It was a different process, so I appreciate you kind of working through.
No, no, it's good.
How the justice will work on this. Yeah. Other questions about, we can stick on the process of how this would work, or any questions about the staffing reserve approach before we kind of get into the general budget questions?
I guess I'll ask one more. You had mentioned earlier about the process, the original answer to Ms. Tice's question, to set the position aside without dedicating it to the staffing reserve, and my concern is I want to want the funds to evaporate.
Right.
If we do that. So can you explain a little bit more about how that process would work? And I do want to echo something that you said, which is important about the fact that this budget, we're talking about a very small percentage of this budget, which we have gotten into the guidance city council gave us, which is all we have to work with right now, even though we're operating in very uncertain economic times.
So the way that you can protect that so that it doesn't evaporate, one is, you know, obviously, we're hearing you, and we would take care of it. But in your motion this evening, if you made the decision to put that position that is currently in the budget as a P Y P coordinator and take the funds for that and put it into a staffing reserve, that can be part of the language of the motion. So then, in that motion, it's codified as that's where it goes into the staffing reserve.
And if we wanted to reserve the ability to, in May, determine, P Y P coordinator makes sense, or oh, my gosh, there's explosive growth and change, and repurpose that, would that still allow us to do that?
Yes. What we would commit to you is, between now and May, between now and when the budget is finally adopted, we would not spend that money on any staffing, staffing. What we would potentially do is we would hit the $100,000 that's in the staffing reserve now first, but we wouldn't touch that until the final decision was made, because it's F Y 26 money, not F Y 25.
Thank you.
So it sounds like we have, right now, the concept of two motions. One is the motion of approving the budget as is, and then the other is the motion of removing the P Y P coordinator and putting those funds in a staffing reserve to revisit in the May timeframe. So that's what we're looking at right now. Okay, so now we can talk about the budget overall. Vice Chair Tice?
I was just going to bring up one more thing, since I was the one who brought it up at the last meeting. And I'm not sure that there, having spoken to my colleagues, I'm not sure that there's enough interest in it. But I will just go ahead and say that I still see a lot of value in moving our assistant principals at the elementary school from 11 months to 12 months. We got updated numbers that it would be a $15,000, roughly $15,000 cost. And I just see, in terms of the stability of leadership over the summer, and especially with increased enrollment and our changes with our approach to our summer programming, and I just personally see a lot of value to that. So I would be very welcome if there's anyone else who still sees value, or if, I also worry about punting that decision until May with respect to the staff members, that would, that it would, you know, dramatically impact their personal plans. And to tell somebody in May they have to work the month of July seems challenging. So if we were to do that, I would very much prefer to do it now and not punt that decision if there's any interest in all, at all.
Ms. Silverman?
I agree that if we were to do that, it would have to be tonight. I don't think that that's the best use of the funds right now. I think that there are many other, in addition to everything that Dr. Anderson had said earlier with population growth, I think there are many more, many different needs that we can be focusing on, especially in the special education realm of the schools. And so I know that the amount of money doesn't cover an F T E or even, you know, 0.5. You know, spending it, I would rather see it spent on marginalized communities or communities that need the extra help, such as special education or ESOL, and would rather see those funds spent there. So therefore, I would not want to revisit this because I don't think it puts, I don't think it's fair to the assistant principals to give them a month or two notice that they have to cut their summer break short, or have any summer break, I should say.
Additional comments or questions about the A P concept that Vice Chair Tice is raising? Okay, other questions or comments, suggestions about the budget, any other general comments overall? Mr. Brett, the mics are working, correct?
All right, I'll make a general comment. One, I want to acknowledge and appreciate all the work that staff, Dr. Noonan, and your team have put into creating this budget and refining this budget and getting it within the guidance given us by city council. I think that's been a really huge, important step, and making sure that within that guidance, we're able to meet all the core needs of our community. I know there are always things that we wish we could fund that we can't. I wish we could have all the funding in the world, but we don't, and I know it's often tough decisions. I also really, really appreciate all the community members, all the teachers and building staff who took the time to write in. I have read every single word that y'all have written, and I really, really appreciate the effort that you made to share your perspectives with us about what is most important and valuable. valuable for the students for whom we are all here. And I just want to note that for all the number of folks who wrote in about the PYP position, all of them talked about the impact on students, right? That the point of the PYP position, from their perspective, and these are teachers and staff in the buildings, that it'd be very beneficial for the, end result of the student learning. And so, I know it's often easy to think of, "Oh, it's not the classroom teacher position, therefore, it doesn't actually impact students." Many positions impact students, whether they're in the classroom, and this position, I think, is one of those. I also want to echo Dr. Anderson's concerns about the economic uncertainty we're living through. At this time of incredible immense uncertainty, the impact on our families, we have no idea what is going to be next week or next month, and that makes it really hard for us to make informed decisions when we're standing in quicksand, and we're not alone. Everybody is in this position right now. But I think we are in a unique position in our community, where even though we cannot fund everything everybody would like to fund, and that I would love to fund, we're able to continue to provide, within this guidance from council, a really strong budget that allows us to provide really top-notch learning experiences and outcomes for our students and opportunities for stability and a great working environment for our teachers and staff. And so, I don't want to lose sight of that when we're talking about some of these things, which are important, but also not the core of the budget. I, having heard this discussion, which was very helpful, I personally would be comfortable passing the budget with the PYP position temporarily in the staffing reserve, so that we can give ourselves a little bit more time with this uncertainty to see if that money is going to be needed elsewhere. I do think that position is important, so I personally wouldn't be in favor of just eliminating it at this moment in time, but I'd be comfortable with waiting to see how things shake out over the next few months.
Sherwood?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Henderson, and I want to reiterate the thanks to everybody who worked so long and hard on this budget, and I think it's impressive, the amount of time and effort put in to ensure that we are within guidance and ensure that the needs of some of our most marginalized groups are being met as well as possible already. So, I appreciated you, Dr. Noonan, really explaining that more to us with Budget Question 51 there, and really laying that out, because that's useful, I think, for everybody to hear. I agree with all of this uncertainty and economically and all of the things that are going on in the city, in terms of our possible growth in enrollment, but also nationally, everything that's going on, that I would be comfortable also putting the PYP coordinator position in sort of the staffing reserve, but like Ms. Henderson, I'm not ready to give up on it. I think we heard some very persuasive advocacy in the last couple of days from the folks who wrote in, and I am not ready to give up on that, but I am concerned about what the future might bring. And so, I think having that extra time is going to be useful for all of us, and so, that's where I would be tonight as well.
Okay. So, we have two motions, possibly a third motion. Let me just reiterate. We have, the first motion would be as-is, as the recommended budget that has been put in forward. The second motion is as-is, however, with the PYP funds being moved to a staffing reserve, and there sounds like a third proposal of the second option, which is moving the PYP funds to the staffing reserve, but still funding the unfunded request of the assistant principals moving those to a 12-month contract. Are there other proposed motions or amendments to the budget before we start to discuss on those three that are in front of us? Or any other aspects to the budget do you want to comment on, or ask Dr. Noonan? Ms. Silverman?
I'm just reading motion number two, looking at that last part, the last sentence, last part of the sentence. Reduce the IB PYP coordinator position by 117,000 and increase the staffing reserve by 127. Where's that extra 10,000?
There was about 90, pardon? About 9,500 that was still unaccounted for in the budget.
Oh, okay. Got it. Thank you. I'm now connecting all the dots. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Silver. Thanks, Ms. Kopp. Ms., our Vice Chair Tice?
I'll just go ahead. I won't belabor the point, because I think my colleague said it so well, but if we, if we're, it feels like the will of the board is moving towards putting the PYP position in the staffing reserve for now, and I just wanted to reiterate, like Ms. Henderson and Ms. Sherwood have said, that I do really see the value in the position, and I am hopeful that we can still, that we can still fund it before this process is fully over, because I do see the value, but respect people's concerns with the uncertainty right now.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tice. Other comments or questions? Dr. Noonan?
If there is a point in time before the final budget adoption that you feel like you've gained some consensus around a decision, let me know, because we can always make some modifications in between to the advertised budget. And the only reason I say that is that one of the unintended consequences of kicking this down to May is if the position were put back into the budget and we hired someone from inside our school division to take that position, it could open a position, it will, there'll be a domino effect. So, it'll open a position, and then we would have to go out and fill that position, and we, you know, we always find good candidates, but now's the time to find the best candidates.
Okay. And I'll make a comment about summer school, so separate from what we talked about. I want to appreciate your staff's leadership on trying to rethink summer school in a very difficult time of January and February. I feel confident that we have a good plan going forward this summer for our students of need, and just to reiterate to the community that we are not cutting summer school, and we're not moving summer school online. I think if you're watching tonight, you can go back to the last meeting and hear a really good presentation by Dr. Bates and his team about how summer school is being restructured. And again, I think it's important for us to make sure it's relevant, and it's efficient, and it's effective, and I feel like we're looking forward to this summer. So, appreciate all the work on that, and a very difficult time to do that. Okay, so we have no other comments from anyone on the board, Dr. Noonan?
Just one last comment, and that's to publicly thank Michelle Koppak for her work. She stepped in the last two weeks and helped train me up very quickly on some of the backend stuff that she and Kristin worked together on, but Michelle has been, we've been tied at the hip for the last couple of weeks, so appreciate her help.
Thank you, Ms. Koppak. Yes, the, yes, really appreciate all the support and the leadership through this whole process, and if the public is listening, the CEO of Schools, Michelle's partner in crime on the budget did leave, and Dr. Noonan is now pulling double duty on multiple things. So, yes, we appreciate all the help on this. All right, so with that, I think we're going to go ahead and look at the three motions. Let me go ahead and first see about, the only thing I don't have understanding about is support for the AP funding that's in the unfunded. Is there any others that support that for the third motion to be considered?
Just to be clear, that was not part of the original proposed, or the current proposed budget from the schools, right?
Correct.
That's correct. We made, we support the, we support the budget as presented, so any changes that you all want to make is certainly-
Okay. All right, so then, we're looking at Option 1, which is the budget as-is, and Option 2, which is the budget as-is minus the IB PYP coordinator, which should be moved to a staffing reserve, as well as the 9,500 that was unaccounted for that would also be put in the staffing reserve. Without, I mean, this is not a formal vote, so just looking for, it sounds like, Ms. Silverman? Option 2? 2? Okay. So, it looks like we're going to go ahead and make the motion for, Dr. Noonan?
Yeah, no, I think you want to, yep, you want to make the motion, get a second, ask for any further discussion, and then move on.
Okay. Make the motion, ask for a second, and then any other discussion?
Any other discussion that might come up.
Sounds good. Okay, so we'll go ahead, and let's see, we're going to, we've got the majority support for Option 2. We're going to have to make an amendment. Somebody looking for Dr. Noonan and Ms. Minson on this.
You actually don't have to make an amendment if you, I gave you some options.
Okay.
So, if you just use Motion 2, no amendment necessary.
Great. All right, Ms. Silverman?
Thank you. I move that the School Board approve for submission to the City Manager the FY 2026 advertised operating budget, fund budget, in the amount of $69,547,486, which requires a city appropriation of $55,528,484. Is detailed in the Superintendent's proposed budget with the following modifications. For revenue, increase state revenue by $275,324 and reduce the general government transfer by $347,780, resulting in an overall revenue decrease of $72,456. For expenditures, reduce health benefit expenditures by $100,000, increase summer school by $17,965, reduce the IB PYP coordinator position by $117,965, and increase the staffing reserve by $127,554.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All in, do we have to do a roll call, or just all in? Let's do a roll call?
I would recommend a roll call.
Yes, sir. All right, roll call. Ms. Caddell?
Yes. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy isn't here. Ms. Sherwood?
Yes.
Ms. Silverman?
Yes.
And Ms. Tice?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Motion passes. All right. Thank you. All right. Let's go ahead and clap, please.
You got a budget.
Got a cross.
Now, it's yours.
All right, and I do have to correct something I earlier said that Vice Chair Tice pointed out. The budget is not over, the process is not over. It is, it is over at this point. Dr. Noonan and I will be, have the honor of presenting in front of the City Council toward the end of March, March 24th, I think is the night, Monday night, I think that's right. And then, and then we'll look forward to having that conversation with our City Council colleagues, and then, as we mentioned tonight, we'll deliberate, and once we understand the final guidance that's hopefully met by the City Council, we'll go ahead and have the final, the final vote in May. All right. Thank you, everybody, for all the work on this. As we said, this does not start in January, this starts in the fall, and we appreciate everybody's attention on this, and looking forward to this budget. Dr. Noonan, as always, a very successful process in terms of how you've navigated this with your team and with the district, and we really appreciate all the leadership on this for how we've gotten here. So, thank you very much.
Of course.
All right. All right, now, we've got two more budgets to go through. As Dr. Noonan points out, a reminder, we've got the Food Services budget and the Community Services budget, which is separate. These are standalone budgets. So, we will go ahead and look at 10.03, Approval of Submission to City Manager of FY '26 Food Service Budget. Is there any comments, questions, or Dr. Noonan, or anything else about this Food Services budget before we move to a motion?
Just recommended option as presented.
Okay. No comments or changes. All right, let's go ahead and have a motion, please, for 10.03. Doc, Mr. Anderson?
I move that the School Board approve the submission to the City Manager the FY 2026 advertised food service budget in the amount of $1,621,448, as detailed in the Superintendent's proposed budget.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Silverman. All in, roll call. Ms. Caddell?
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy? Sorry, she's, keep going. Ms. Sherwood?
Yes.
Ms. Silverman?
Yes.
And Ms. Tice?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Caddell. All right. And now, let's move on to 10.04, Approval of Submission to City Manager for FY '26 Community Services Budget. Ms. Sherwood?
I move that the School Board approve for submission to the City Manager the fiscal year 2026 advertised Community Services Fund Budget in the amount of $2,666,200, requiring a total city appropriation of $107,500, as detailed in the Superintendent's proposed budget.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Ms. Caddell?
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Sherwood?
Yes.
Ms. Silverman?
Yes.
And Ms. Tice?
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Caddell. All right. All right, now, we're going to, back to the fun stuff. Ms. Minson, we're going to look at 10.05, waiver, go into policies. We'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thank you. We have a number of policies for waiver, first reading, second reading, and adoption this evening, as a reminder, and many thanks to Ms. Murphy and Ms. Henderson. When policies are brought for waiver, first reading, there are no substantive changes to the policies as to where they are currently. So, what's presented is really ministerial changes to policies. These changes are all in Section D, and that's a section that talks about the finances of the division, and I had the chance to review these policies with Ms. Michael prior to her departure. All of the policies were older than five years when the Board had last adopted it, so it made sense, one was three years, but they all were fairly not adopted recently, and it made sense to update these. Most of the changes throughout either are just updating the date that they're adopted or removing the cross-reference to numbered policies, because the Board has made so much progress and headway in getting to those lettered policies. I'm happy to take those in order and describe the ministerial changes in those, or to answer any questions about the policies. The one change that I did want to point out at Policy DLB, Salary Deductions, we do clarify the states for which we're paying taxes. Previously, the policy had just said federal and state taxes were automatically deducted from employees' pay. The change now would be for Virginia, Maryland, and the District of Columbia, so not for all states, and that's because of the workload that it takes to upload other tax codes and to process every month payments for states outside of the DMV area would be difficult for us to be able to accomplish. So, that change is a ministerial change, but I did want to point that out, because that was additional language to the policy. There weren't any other additions to language in the policies for any of these six policies before the Board.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Minson. Since we're waiving, we're looking for unanimous-
It looks like Ms. Anderson had- Just one clarification, Ms. Minson, and that is, this is, this change that you just referenced in DLB reflects current operational practices.
That's correct.
It's a change to operational practices.
Correct.
Any other questions for Ms. Minson about 10.05? All right. So, it looks like we have unanimous consent to move forward with this, so we're going to look for a motion for 10.05. Mr. Anderson?
Weird. I move that the School Board waive first reading and approve the second reading and adoption of Policies DC, Other Post-Employment Benefits Funding, DI, Financial Accounting and Reporting, DIA, Reporting Per Pupil Cost, DJG, Vendor Relations, DLB, Salary Deductions, and DLC Expense Reimbursements.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Tice. All in favor, say yes. Any opposed? All right. Ms. Minson, 10.06?
All right. Policies for second reading this evening. There are five policies that were presented in February. There were no proposed changes to those policies, other than realizing that Policy II/AA, Textbook Selection, Adoption, and Purchase, did not have the headers bolded at lines 5, 25, and 61. So, I did make those changes, but otherwise, the policies for second reading are ones that were presented in February. There had been no proposed, no questions or proposed changes to those, and I'm happy to take them one by one, but also would welcome any questions on those policies.
All right. All right, so with 10.06, no questions, so we're going to go ahead and move for a motion for 10.6, Second Reading and Adoption of Policies. Ms. Henderson?
I move that the School Board approve second reading and adoption of Policies IF, Curriculum Development and Adoption, IAA, Notification of Learning Objectives, II/AA, Textbook Selection, Adoption, and Purchase, IGBA, Programs for Students with Disabilities, and GEA/JOH, Acceptance of Electronic Signatures and Records as Presented.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. And then, 10.07, First Reading.
Thank you. We have five policies for first reading this evening, four of which come within the Section D but had more than ministerial changes, so did want to present those line by line for the Board. The first is Policy DG, Custody and Disbursement of School Funds. This policy was last reviewed by the Board in April of 2019. You'll notice that there's addition of legal references, there's an additional addition addition of legal references. There's an addition of a cross-reference to Policy DA. But the main change in this policy is to remove a cross-reference to DGD, Funds for Instructional Materials and Office Supplies, and remove line nine to 10 specifying that there are school board account, there's a school board account for the purchase of instructional materials and office supplies, since that's not how the school board budget and funds are structured. Questions about Policy DG?
So just for those policy logs, tracking along at home, this change reflects current practices as opposed to implementing some new operational procedure, correct?
That is correct. It's a cross-reference. It's in the VSBA policy, but we don't utilize, so making it consistent with our current practices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on DG? Seeing none, next is Policy DL, Payroll Procedures. The policy is, it's currently written, says that employees are paid in accordance with the schedule approved by the school board. By changing that language to say the employees are paid in semi-monthly increments, that would be actually an action of the board via policy to show approval of semi-monthly increments, which is the current practice. So that would be the one change to this policy other than updating it since it was last reviewed in May 2020, and removing the cross-references to the old numbered policies. Questions about Policy DL? Seeing none, next is Policy DM, Cash in Schools. This was last reviewed in April 2019. And the proposed change, thanks to Dr. Noonan, would be to change the phrase "principal's office" to an actual person rather than a office or a space receiving any cash that is in the building. So the change would be that any personnel who's in possession of cash at the end of the school day will turn it over to the principal, the bookkeeper, or their designee for safekeeping and proper accounting. There's also the removal of the numbered cross-reference to Policy 4.17. Questions about Policy DM? All right. Then is Policy DN, Disposal of Surplus Items. These are changes that the VSBA made in its February 2025 policy update to make a little bit more clear when surplus items are being disposed of, that it's the purchase, if the purchaser is an officer employee of the school division, and that it's the items that are being disposed of. Ms. Sherwood did point out that at line 22, rather than saying arrange for their disposal of the items, it should say arrange for the disposal of the items. So I would think that's a reasonable change. And if that's agreeable to the board in adopting this first reading, you could see, say, adopt as presented or adopt as amended, I do think that's a reasonable and good and thoughtful change. There were also a change at lines 25 through 28. There's kind of a listing of what, who obsolete educational technology hardware may be donated to. So rather than have it separated by commas and then commas within those sections, adding a colon after may be donated. So may be donated, colon, and then to other school divisions instead of a comma, a semicolon, then to students, comma, as provided in Board of Education Guidelines, another semicolon, and then instead of and, saying or to preschool programs in the Commonwealth. So thank you, Ms. Sherwood, for those proposed changes. I think those make very good sense and certainly make the policy more readable, which is what the VSBA was hoping to do in its February update. Questions about Policy DN? All right. Then, the final policy for first reading this evening would be Policy EFB, Food Services. There are some fairly substantive changes to this policy, and I'm very grateful to Mr. Kane, Dr. Noonan, and Ms. Michael in sitting down to go over this policy. It was last reviewed in March 2021, and there were some proposed changes by the VSBA. Also, as part of Richard's audit with the VDOE, they had proposed adding certain language to the policy. So as we, as I typically present policies to the board, language in red would be proposed updates to our current policy. These are all proposed changes from the VSBA, so they align with Virginia law. I left the footnotes in there just so the board could have the benefit of seeing what the VSBA provides, the reasoning for these updates and the reasons for the different references, but those footnotes are for reference. They would be removed when it's time for second reading of this policy. Any changes that are not part of the VSBA model policy and that Dr. Noonan, Mr. Kane, Ms. Michael, and myself were recommended are in green font. For example, on page three at line 105, when we're talking about the number of school-sponsored fundraisers per school year that can be held, adding a note that school sponsors should consider purchasing food and beverages from FCCPS Food Services for their fundraising needs was something that made sense and hopefully will make the lives of school sponsors and of students easier as they're planning for fundraising. There's also a change at line 23, 123, adding that the school social worker is someone who will be informed by the nutrition director if there's not regular meal money for students. So if a student needs additional support, it wouldn't just be the principal. The school social worker would be looped in. Another change proposed by Ms. Sherwood that I think does make sense, there's a definition of excess food at line 79 to 82. And because we don't end up with excess food, all of the previous references to excessive food have been removed, so it doesn't make sense to define a term that isn't used throughout the policy. So I think that's a great change to the policy and would be something that if the board is in agreement on first reading, it would be the board approving the first reading of these policies as amended. I think that's a good change. But I'm happy to answer any questions about Policy EFB, Food Services.
All right. With that, I think we'll, if there's any other questions for Ms. Minson about any of this or comments, then we'll go ahead and move forward with a motion. Okay. Can we have a motion for, for this action? 10.07, yes. Vice Chair Tice.
I move that the school board approve first reading of Policies DG, Custody and Disbursement of School Funds, DL, Payroll Procedures, DM, Cash in School Buildings, DN, Disposal of Surplus Items, and EFB, Food Services as presented. Oh, sorry, as amended.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tice. Do I have a second? Ms. Sherwood, thank you. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Ms. Minson. I appreciate it. Yeah. I think is this a record in terms of?
It's a lot more than we've done recently. So thank you for, Ms. Murphy and Ms. Henderson for all your work on these policies. It certainly has made the process a lot smoother.
Great. All right. Thanks, Ms. Minson. All right. All right. Now, we'll move on to Section 11, Future Agenda Items. Dr. Noonan.
Yep. So any future agenda items that you all are interested in adding to work sessions? This would be the time, work sessions or meetings, this would be the time to mention them. We do have, in the April timeframe, a work session on student discipline that was requested earlier this year. So if you all have anything, just let us know.
Any ideas or suggestions? Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Now, we'll go ahead and go to board and student liaison updates. Nope, sorry. Superintendent's report.
Yeah. Thanks for that. First, I want to talk a little bit about IB teaching and learning. This is IB week, it seems like, in Falls Church City Public Schools. There is a lot going on at our elementaries and our middle and our high school relative to IB presentations. Monday kicked off the IB Showcase Week at Meridian, and our 10th graders were sharing their NYPD projects with presentations of projects that they wanted to learn more about. It's kind of a passion project of choice of the student. Every single one was different. Every single one was unique. And the topics included things such as training to be able to pitch a baseball 80 miles an hour, all about Columbia, learning about Japanese, making a physical photo album about summer camp, eating to protect the planet. I took a particular interest in some of the crocheting and some others, only because there's someone in my house that crochets, too. But there were all kinds of really cool projects and had a great night on Monday night as well, sharing those. The junior IB diploma students presented their theory of knowledge projects, and senior IB students began to share their cast projects as well, which is very exciting. Oak Street, the 5th grade students are putting the final touches on their presentations for Thursday night for their exhibition, and that is Thursday from 5:00 to 6:00. Teams have been working together on problems that they've, that they are wanting to solve. And many of the adults in the room here are mentors of students at Oak Street as well and are very excited to have supported those students in their work. But it's going to be amazing to see the research that everybody did on their projects. So come on by Thursday night. Want to congratulate our Wind Ensemble students at Meridian High School, who reached new heights in their superior ratings, in the highest level of music difficulty at their annual assessment. They performed for, before four esteemed judges from across the country, and they demonstrated remarkable perseverance, really great musicality, and again, shared what a gift they are to the community. As part of the rigorous assessment, they did a number of assessments, but the performances that they did was The Lamb's March by John Philip Sousa, Eliminate the Future by a Japanese composer, Noro, and then Vesuvius by Frank T. Shelley. And so congratulations to all of them. Their commitment to excellence in the showcase, to showcase the strength of Meridian's music was quite extraordinary. And lastly, congratulations to all of our winter athletes on a really great and impressive seasons. Particularly, want to just shout out the boys' basketball team that took us on an amazing ride this year and went 26-0 until their last game. And they ended up 26-1, and their one loss was in the state semifinal against a team that had two guys that were 6'11". And so, you know, sometimes you run across these teams, but this player, this group of players was really special to watch. They've all been together, for the most part, since their early days playing in Parks and Rec in Falls Church, and this season was one for the ages. So congratulations to them. And as they wrap up, we launch spring sports. And every afternoon, the fields are full with practices and games are starting soon. We already have some scrimmages under our belts, and it's going to be a busy and very exciting spring. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. A lot going on. It's exciting. Good weather as well to kind of kick off the spring. So, all right. We'll go ahead. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. We'll go ahead and move on to school board liaison comments. We'll start with Mr. Anderson. What have you been up to?
So just a little bit. Just been up to just a little bit. So I attended the RAC and Parks meeting last month, where they discussed extensively items relating to the fellow's property. And so it was one of the many public meetings that's, that has been the topic of. And so it is planned to go forward with its design. And it was noted that it would be a good resource for out, potential outdoor classrooms for Oak Street. And I know that our 5th, one of our 5th grade classes has proposed some legislation for just that. And so they will certainly have some facilities to do that if that does go through the legislature. I was also able to attend the SEEK meeting as well. I'll let Mr. Gould speak more about that later, but it was great to see the administration and support staff in collaboration. And then we have the Advanced Academic Committee meeting this Thursday, and so I'll have an update for that next month.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, Ms. Henderson.
I don't have much to report. SBIE does not meet until next week, and we passed the resolution today. Obviously, the PTAs are continuing to do wonderful things at each of the schools, and I'll highlight, again, the elementary school gift day coming up on Friday.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Ms. Silverman.
I will have an update next time through Health and Wellness, which meets next week.
Great. All right. We'll get to our cavalier section with Ms. Tyson, then Ms. Rice.
Yes. Well, whoa. I have nothing to report. I don't think I've ever said that before.
All right, Ms. Rice. That is exciting. I'm sure that's a, yeah, many, yeah, but two years you've been working on that. So that's great. So congratulations. All right. Thanks, Ms. Rice. Ms. Sherwood.
I don't have much to report either. I will note that, as Dr. Noonan said, spring sports are starting, and so the athletic boosters have made a push to, if your student is just joining for spring sports, join the athletic boosters.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. And I have been out and about mostly with Dr. Noonan at various Falls Church Education Foundation meetings, and which have been great to work with our foundation. I've also attended the SEEK meeting as well, which is always a great partnership, so with our school staff and our school administration. So, and then, the only other item, gives it's IB week. We want to present a video about art and IB. So we'll go ahead, Mr. Brett, if you want to play this. Thank you, Mr. Brett. I appreciate that video, and I received a letter from the school board, and I'll go ahead and read it. "With this to Chair Tate Gould from the members of the Falls Church City School Board and request to name an area of the Meridian High School after Dr. Peter J. Noonan. With this request, we are honored to propose the dedication of the Learning Stairs at Meridian High School to Dr. Peter J. Noonan, who has dutifully served as superintendent of our district for the past nine years. As he prepares to retire, this naming would be fitting tribute to his unwavering commitment to education, decorated career in public education, and transformative impact on our school community. The Learning Stairs is more than just a physical space. It is a vibrant hub where students gather, ideas are exchanged, and informal learning flourishes. It is a place where talks are held, connections are forged, and curiosity is nurtured, values that Dr. Noonan has championed throughout his tenure. His leadership has consistently placed learning first, emphasizing innovative educational approaches that empower students and educators alike. By dedicating this space in his honor, we recognize his pivotal role in supporting, designing, and building an environment where intellectual growth and community thrive. We respectfully request your approval to name this portion of Meridian High School the Dr. Peter J. Learning, Noonan Learning Stairs. This dedication will be a lasting testament to his legacy, inspiring future generations of students to pursue knowledge with the same passion and purpose he exemplified. Thank you for considering this a proposal. We look forward to commemorating Dr. Noonan's contributions and service in a manner befitting his remarkable career. Sincerely, the Falls Church City School Board."
Thanks. I honestly, I don't know what to say, and that's unusual for me. I, what an honor, and what a privilege to have worked in such a great place, that we have such great leaders and such great kids. I want that piece of art more. It's really beaut- oh, you've got it. Wow. 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 Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much to all of you for this really nice honor. I'm touched by it. And obviously, the high school was a passion project of my own, sort of on this week of passion projects, and it's one that I'm really proud of, the work that was done. So having this is really very generous. So thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Noonan, as you're about to find out, this honor continues, the train keeps going for the next couple of months. We are going to have to go through a process. And Ms. Minson, can you please go ahead and outline that process for us? And Dr. Noonan, just to let you know, obviously, all of us were a part of this. There was a number of your staff that were part of this as well, and they're all very excited and smiling as well. So we're all excited to present this to you. So, Ms. Minson, can you please outline the process?
Absolutely. School Board Policy 4.25 governs the naming of specific areas of school facilities. The school board can do honorary naming of specific areas for exceptional contributions. The area name should be substantively related to the area in which the individual has contributed to the schools, and groups or individuals wishing to initiate such an action must submit a written recommendation to the school board chairman and the superintendent, detailing the areas to be dedicated or named, and providing the information supporting the recommendation, which just happened. Upon receipt of the recommendation, the chair and the superintendent receive the written recommendation and then consider that request and determine whether a committee will be convened or whether the board will take action without a committee being convened. The school board has to consider the matter of naming of the space in the form of a resolution, and the resolution will name the areas of the facility and provide a duration of the naming. And it must be subject to public hearing prior to adoption. The school board has final authority over any naming. So the proposal would be that there is an opportunity for public comment on this proposal for the naming of the specific area, and then the board would act on it in the form of a resolution following receipt of public comment. of a resolution following a receipt of public comment on this proposal.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Minson. And so, for in terms of timing, this would be the April meeting that we would propose the resolution, and then allow for public comment there, and then May, we would vote on the final, the final passage of the naming.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great. And then, you, you mentioned that there is a process that we, that the chair has to identify a committee or not, correct?
Yes, it can either be a committee to review, or there can be direct consideration by the board.
So, direct consideration is the choice that we prefer. We do not prefer to have a committee.
Very good.
So, and then, and then the, the, the last step of this process, is there anything else that we need to do in terms of moving forward for the April meeting for consideration?
Make sure that there's a resolution that's available to the public, so anyone who wants to comment on that comes to the April meeting. So, including that information in morning announcements, or making it available to the public, so that they know they're welcome to come and share public comment, as they are at any board meeting.
Great. And I have a feeling that a few people are going to be interested in helping edit this resolution, and exciting to add the number of successes that you've had and the impact that you've had on our district. So, we look forward to that. And unfortunately, this is the, the surprise in a, in a, in classic school board form, but, but this is the process that we go through, and-
I'll take a surprise like this anytime. So, thank you again.
Absolutely. And the, the artist that John Brett, or Mr. Brett worked with was Catherine Buckholz, who put that together, and appreciate Mr. Brett for, obviously, video editing, also getting that all put together in a quick amount of time in terms of for tonight. So, appreciate Mr. Brett, and we're looking forward to this. So, then, the final step on this, so once we approve this in May, then we would have the actual naming in June, is, is, is the, the actual process. So, okay. There's going to be a lot of steps for this, so, yes. All right.
Steps, huh?
Should have got that. Thank you, Ms. Minson. All right. All right. We're looking forward to this for, for the next few months. So, with that, we will continue the, the good, the good vibes, and we'll go to Approval of Minutes. Let's see, we're looking for the Approval of Minutes for asking for unanimous consent to approve minutes of October 8th, 2024, November 12th, 2024, and February 11th, 2025, as presented. All right. All right. And then, now, with, we've got the materials for board review, we've got the enrollment, the monthly budget monitoring report, and the budget questions that we've already reviewed. So, we can, we'll go through that. Anything else for the good of the order? All right. With that, I think it's good to end. Thank you. Adjourned, everybody.